Hello Johnny, I need to uh send somebody else to pass them out. I don't know if you got enough. I'm gonna go out of order for just a minute, talk about this so we can add it. Alright, I'd like the, somebody to make a motion to add resolution number two thousand eleven ten oh five, apologize for being late. It, as you know, every ten years we have census. That census uh changes uh the voting districts for our city. Some, some districts go up, some districts go down. And uh, uh some districts have a lot more people in them than other districts according to the way they're drawn. Uh, the Justice Department says that we have to uh have every district be about the same amount of people. And we have to have uh, there's certain other qualifications, you know, that we um, there's some dilution rules and things like that and uh, you know, I, if y'all want to talk about all we can, but anyway. Um, we currently have five districts in the city of Leeds, the mayor runs it large. And uh, each district has around twenty-three hundred people. Some districts currently have only about sixteen, seventeen hundred, some districts have about thirty-five hundred. So some people, you know, it's definitely out of skew for the two thousand and ten census. Uh, so the Justice Department says we have to draw, redraw our district lines. Alright, well, that's okay if you can find somebody to do it, but we've tried all over to get that done. Because the man who does that sits on our planning and zoning board, there seems to be uh some reservations there about, you know, him doing it. And uh, he wasn't mine, but, so we had to go out and find somebody from the state of reenforcement office that, you know, they said they would do it. There are some deadlines on this stuff, it's uh, there's a six-month um window that you have to have it done by. And uh, we've talked to somebody in the state reenforcement office, they said they would do this, but they had to hurry on it. So this is why it's being added at the last minute, because I was only talking about this today when I'm working on the computer on, at the drugstore and got the phone mirror and the other. So, um, that's why it's here tonight, these people, uh, they work for the Alabama Legislative Reenforcement Office. You see their fees there, uh, you know, and um, they uh have said they would do that, and it definitely is gonna have to have some work. Cause there's three districts that, you know, decreased, there's, there's two districts that increased. And uh, it's gonna have to be a majorly adjusted. So, um, in order to contract with these people to go ahead and get started on it, this is a resolution authorizing me to contract with the legislative, legislative reenforcement office. And that's what that is.
Okay, I make a motion, we add um G, resolution two thousand eleven dash ten oh five.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
I'm trying to look in here Mary to see, our population really didn't change though, right?
Yeah, it went up uh.
Very much.
It went up uh, say ten thousand seats, I don't even remember. Went up eleven hundred people, ain't that right Ken, something like that, around eleven hundred people. No, it was ten six and we went up to like eleven seven or something like that. And uh, eleven eight, what, I think that's.
Eleven seven three.
Eleven seven seventy-three, should ask Ms. Ernest off the start with. And uh.
It's on the back.
On the back.
Alright, well, there you go, it's on the back.
I got it, I got it.
Um, and you see the difference in the uh districts, they used to have twenty-three fifty-five, uh around that number. You can tell that it's gonna take some work to fix, to fix these districts. And there's some other stipulations on it too, so they need to get started on this. Their rate is on the front, uh, it's uh, fifty dollars an hour plus a flat fee, a two to ten dollars per mile. And that's very reasonable. And uh, also, y'all, I've got a motion and second, do you have any other discussions?
No, honestly, I'd like to say when they get ready to start doing, I'd like to meet the people who are.
Well, I would think all y'all would want to, cause all y'all got a vote to agree to it.
Just it's gonna be in Montgomery, they're in Montgomery.
Oh, that's right, they're in Montgomery.
Okay.
And it'll have to be soon, the rec, one of the reasons of the hurry up is they'll start the legislative redistricting in about three or four weeks.
They were having meetings or a hurry.
Once they start that.
Right.
They'll be really tied up with, with that, so we can get something scheduled here shortly.
And I don't mind, you know, talking to uh, yep, y'all, you know, wanting to um, ask, you know, any questions about it at some point about what some of the restrictions are, it's very, it's very restrictive. Okay, I think one of the things that um has kinda made Leeds's uh an unusual map is the fact that uh, one of our council people was in three counties. And they probably tried to keep that down to a minimum, cause it's so hard for, you know, personally, you have to register in three counties, you have to mail all your uh forms into three counties. And I would like to have them look at trying to diminish that a little bit, to try to keep, I mean, Ms. Ernest has, sits in three counties right now. She's got Shelby Jefferson in St. Clair.
But we all have to register in all three counties though.
Nope, sure don't.
Attorney General told me no.
Only me and her.
Uh, well, if I'm not recalling, every year I have always had to register in three counties because you voted for those people in that county too. I mean, whatever we doing here as a council reflects every.
But you're not required by law.
Yep, well.
I know that for a fact.
Go back and check me.
Whatever county you sit in.
I, I have that question Kenneth, and I went ahead and did it in all three counties, but I called the state election committee and they told me no, I only had to register in the county.
That's right.
If my district was enclosed in one county, I only had to register in that county. But now Shelby County, when I called them, they um, the state said only one. When I called Shelby County, it said, well, we don't know, we're not sure, it'd be better if you just went ahead and did it. So I did it in all three counties, but the state says you do not have to.
Only the county you're, you're in.
Cause your voters are only in Jefferson County.
And I think that's why her district wraps so far around and starts with, cause it tried to get all St. Clair and keep everybody else from having more than one county. You don't have any in St. Clair, can you, Johnny?
No, nobody get butts right up there at Blair Street with Ms. Ernest and then just goes over the hill and catches us there.
Right, I think that's why it's drawn so unusual, they tried to take that account and only put the burden on one person.
My boss, the one that's got the most pay.
So, anyway, y'all have any other discussions? And uh, alright, y'all got, we've got to vote on it, we've got to get it drawn up, we have to vote on it when it comes down to it. And it has to be approved because the Justice Department has approved it.
It's approved here first with the public hearing and then you'll go to the break plans.
There'll be a problem when we have an election. So, uh, all those in favor of adding resolution two thousand eleven ten oh five, not approving to just adding it, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that'd be item G. Alright. Okay, we've got.
Uh, if Johnny needs the pictures, I will leave them, we will go.
I know, you can take them with you.
I didn't know if he needed them for his file or for any reason for the city.
You can take them with you.
Yeah, just give them with you.
Okay, I can bring them back.
Sorry about that.
Thank you for your attention, thank you.
Alright. Alright. Okay, we uh, at the uh, under item E, at the uh, work session, we uh, David Point and I explained uh, the uh, the fact that we uh, looking at trying to do some capital improvements on City Hall. And uh, we've got a little window of opportunity that uh, when the school bonds kick in, it's gonna go away. And uh, this end, window of opportunity has allowed us to have a certain amount of cash for capital improvements. But that, that cash won't last for a couple of years. The uh, you know, we have uh, City Hall right now, courts in one building at the other end of Leeds, the mayor's office in the middle of Leeds. And uh, the police and the administration share a building. Building that administration shares, there's uh, five people, sometimes six, sharing six hundred square feet. Alright, the police have a property room that's a hundred and fifty feet square. So it's definitely cozy, alright. The uh, people bonds are projected to uh, be paid on for thirty years, if not, if we go along where I doubt it will, but thirty years is a, is a payout, right? And uh, so once they kick in, there'll be no, nothing like that that'll be able to be done. And it's just a little bit of a window that we uh, tried to find the money for, we talked about it at the uh meeting with all the departments. And uh, what we wanted to do was bring in, was build a community room, council room, court on one end that connected to the police building, where when they had court, they could bring prisoners and stuff in, police could come in through the back. The middle would be like uh, a, a, a lobby type thing with a reception and bathroom and stuff. The left side, if you're looking at it from the road, would be administration. And the police would be hooked up through the back of the building. And all their parking would be in the back. Uh, at one time, there was, there'd been plans were looked at to build uh, something on our school road. And that's five and a half acres, all utilities, all infrastructure, everything is up there. Already stubbed in on that dirt area you see when you go up the school road on the right. And I'd hope one day that would be the City Hall site. With the people bonds being paid for the next thirty years, that's not gonna happen, I can tell y'all that now. So, to do anything, you know, this is our opportunity. And uh, we uh, looked, looked at some different architects, we found a guy who gave us a great rate. He understands our budget constraints, and he's done smaller uh, projects like this. And uh, he uh, willing to give us a real good uh, um, like, a real good uh, rate of six and a half on it.
It's actually, it's actually six point seven five.
It is.
That was, that was a typo in the, in the resolution.
At six point seven five, we're going to work with Frank at the same time they're building the fire station. Go inside the drives and the parking and all that, and try to make the two things, the two buildings look sort of alike. Um, the reason it's came up like it has is because we realized, this is it, this is our only chance. It's eight thousand square feet, uh, that's just some of the stuff he's done before. And uh, he knows that our budget's constrained to around a hundred dollars or a hundred and ten dollars per square foot. Said he couldn't get up to a hundred and fifteen then. And so the guy uh knows what we're working with, um, you know, and uh, this would also allow us to take the school roadside that we had for City Hall, or we talked about it one time. Possibly, if y'all wanted to give it to them, sell it to them, whatever they all wanna do, cause y'all control the money. And build a new school on that. And uh, the fact that it's stubbed out with infrastructure is gonna be a big deal. I've already talked to JJ about it, the superintendent, he likes the site fine. And uh, but you know, thirty years is thirty years. And uh, this bu, this building here probably not gonna last another thirty years. So, so we've got to do something. And this is, and we've only got this year and possibly next year to do something on it. And if the fire station's being built, we need to do them together.
Well, if I wish Dan correctly, do not have the money to pay for it now, it's not.
Paying cash.
That's what I'm talking about.
David's scrounged it up. Got a good job of it.
We got, yeah, this is money that we won't get in two more years.
In two years, it will be absorbed, it'll be gone, it's gone.
They used to pay out the people bonds.
Well, it'll just be absorbed because of the way this tax structure and all set up. And uh, and he just, it's just showing you some smaller stuff he's done. And anyway, this is a uh, a contract for this uh, architect to uh, for us to contract with him for him to go ahead and start the design. And uh, and you see uh, the name of the architect there and uh, and also, so it is six seven five, five instead of six point five.
That's correct.
Uh, so that needs to be changed.
Yeah.
But um.
Okay, I make a motion, we uh approve resolution two thousand eleven ten oh three.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Well, Mary, I guess I need to discuss something. You know, I was looking at the budget, and I wanted to talk about the whole budget, because I did ask for us to just wait about a week or two, uh, for me to review the whole budget. Mary, it, it comes my attention for all the things that we try to do here in the communities. And I, I'm not knocking the police department or any other department. But there's a lot of things that gotta need to be done. And even in my district, I could just talk about mine, we haven't done not one thing. I got a, a ditch on Linda Street that we hadn't addressed yet. Uh, a lot of other things that, uh, with the park that we hadn't addressed yet. It's uh, it's a shame we didn't look at the park over there when we look at other parks everywhere else. Uh, I don't understand, and when we put this on the agenda, you expect for me to come in here within ten minutes to vote for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go into something without even studying? Uh, I, I just believe that if we was gonna spend eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it'd take more than ten minutes to make a decision on it. My fact is not even ten minutes. So, it looked like you didn't involve the whole council, not even me, they said.
Well, we discussed for over an hour at the budget meeting.
Take one hour to spend eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yep.
And you discussed, we had one budget meeting with a eighteen, closer, nineteen million dollar budget. One hour, one budget meeting, and now here, here we are, want to spend eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars with all the things that we need to do in the community, we're gonna take it and spend it on City Hall. I mean, it, it seemed to me that at least, the whole council could've met on this and talked about it. And uh, I don't see what we can do to that. And I'm, I'm, I'm asking if we got the kind of money laying around. That uh, I'd like to know how much money we got in every account that we have.
Well, I just told you, we got a windfall from the way the people bond is set up, to be able to do this. And once they kick in, it's gone.
Well.
So we can't wait forever to do these things, it, we can wait another thirty-two years to do something like that. I mean, we could do that, and we could, you know, and once this building's probably gone, we could just, cause we don't have the money to refurbish it probably, those people bonds are gonna be taking like twenty-five percent of our budget.
They sure are.
And, but, but we're doing projects all over town.
What about?
I can get a list of all of them.
In my community?
Yes, in your community. Kevin and I met on four and one day looking at stuff over there, what we're doing.
Uh, that's what gets me too, here I am, I ran for this office and I get left out. Like you know everything to do in my community without consulting me. I mean, I hadn't even been told, they said, if you're gonna meet over there, at least I think I should know what need, what the, my community needs are. I mean, you and I, anyway, not you and Kevin, you and I.
Well, I mean Kevin's the ones that are here every day and with, and Frank, and that's, we get out and we go around and do all these things. We've done a ton of stuff in every community.
So, so where is I, where am I?
You gonna come out every day and go through all this stuff?
Do you know where I'm at?
You gonna spend thirty hours a week, and forty hours a week like I do going through the city doing all this stuff?
Well, I did get elected.
And get, not getting paid jack crap to do it either, or.
I did get elected, so.
You know.
So I guess this your way of getting paid, spend eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'm not getting paid nothing off of this. I'm building a, I'm building a City Hall for the city, just like one you can use and everybody else up here can use.
Well, what I'm saying is, I'm not out of order.
I said this is why I'm getting paid.
And, and, and I'm gonna tell you Ms. Ernest, when you say I'm out of order, you're out of order. Especially when you gonna send every member of this council emails talking about business of the city and leave me out of it. Now, it's enough been going on, and I haven't said enough. But, and I'm trying to choose my words to tell you this without causing a whole lot of confusion. But Mary, it looked like, even if you gonna spend eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have roads that need to be fixed.
And we're fixing roads.
No, you're not fixing them.
Okay.
They haven't been fixed, we got ditches that need to be fixed, there's people, homes are flooded.
How long you been on this council?
I've been on it a long time.
And how many roads got paid in the last twelve years when you were on this council?
But you know what, I'm gonna tell you something.
How many projects you got done?
I'm glad you brought that up, because.
I am too, cause nothing got done.
This council, the last, the last administration fixed it so we can have some money to spend.
Did they?
The only, only person been spending money is you.
Ninety-one million dollars of debt.
You ain't earned no saving or anything.
That's you was up here on every bit of it, ninety-one million dollars in debt.
Nothing, nothing. And you came in raising hell about everything that the council, the last administration done.
Every bit of, ninety-one million dollars in debt.
And you came in here many times talking about what we was doing, that it was wrong. Billing Walmart was wrong, billing Lowe's was wrong, but you's the one spending all this money that comes from those, from those.
I don't know.
Yeah, oh yes you are, yes you are. And, and right now, I think that you out of order because number one, you should've got with this council.
He did.
I did.
We had a budget meeting that lasted almost three hours.
One budget meeting.
Well, I was gonna sit here and make five.
One budget.
Three hours you sat here.
One budget, one budget meeting for eighteen million dollars.
We went over, and it's not that, some of that money comes in and goes right back out again. It does, something.
Four million dollars of it from the past administrations.
Comes in and goes right back out again, it's not part, it's not to be spent, it's, it's a, explain how that works, please.
Yeah, no, Susan, you the one talking, you has money.
She can explain.
I like for you to have money.
It goes for.
You the budding in, uh, you has money.
It goes for.
Okay, we have a debt of four million dollars, the money comes into our account and we have to turn right around and write that four million back out again, it's not spendable cash.
Okay.
So instead of eighteen or nineteen million, you have to subtract four back off of that, cause it basically just cycles through our city account.
Well, that's just about with all money at the City Hall.
Now, this is a specific debt that has to be paid.
This money is unusable for spending.
It's unusable, we cannot spend it, we can't spend, choose how to spend, it's dedicated.
It's dedicated money, you're right.
Yes, four million dollars. That comes in and goes right back out again, we can't assign it to a department.
You're right, Susan.
So, we took the office.
So what, we gonna do with eight hundred?
We were under, but between ten, high, eleven million dollars, and now we're up at fifty, you're saying we're up at fifteen million? As far as budget.
Up to thirteen.
Our, we're close to thirteen.
Thirteen, so we went up two million dollars. I, you know, I, maybe so, but that'd be hard for me to believe in this economic times. And you know, and, and y'all just said, y'all did, y'all didn't notify us, and I didn't show up for the budget meeting. I, I, you know, I, I worked, I was out working, and I got called out of town, so I had to go. But let me tell you something, if it's on that paper that night, at the budget, when it was in the budget already, that somebody talked about, talked about it prior to that meeting, because it made it on the paper at that meeting. And that's what aggravates me the most, is y'all had prior knowledge going into there that there was talk about expanding City Hall. Did I have? No, I read it in the paper that was given out for that meeting. And I would've heard about it if I got to that meeting, but how, who all got together and decided this was gonna happen? And put it on the budget on this meeting?
The mayor, the mayor is the CEO of the city.
He not winning.
He can make those decisions.
And I understand that, so you, you didn't know nothing about it, Ms. Ernest?
Only because he asked us to put the money in the budget and I happened to be the kind of.
See, that's the problem.
That's the only right of reason.
But y'all know about it.
She knew about it, she knew about it.
Only because I worked on the budget and we had to put the money in the budget.
She knew about it.
She met with every department, I did.
And the, and, and the mayor just said, every department, every, he talked to them about the new City Hall.
Well, at the.
They weren't at the budget work session.
Did he pick, did he pick up the phone and try to call Mayor Kenneth?
I talked to him at the budget, at the workshop, I mean, at the whatever.
Well, you didn't say that, you just said you talked everywhere.
Work session, at the work session.
At the work session.
Just like I just talked about here.
But you don't, you still don't understand what I'm saying. You made a decision yourself, yourself by Eric Patterson, that you're gonna build a City Hall without the council's approval and you put it on the budget already without even talking to anybody.
I can't do anything without the council.
But that didn't, that's just.
You know you got your free votes.
The polls are being a reality now, it's coming, becoming real.
I mean, you know, I mean.
One, one, you tell me three hours, and you got, I'm quite sure y'all smarter than us, but three, three hours you've already made a decision to spend eight hundred and fifty dollars on the City Hall, when all this other crap in the city need to be fixed. You made, and you made, you made a decision for every one of us up here. And everyone is gonna go along with it and say, okay, we got that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so this is what we're gonna do.
Kenneth, I, I do believe during the last group, y'all had plans drawn up to build a Taj Mahal that was gonna cost about six million dollars for a City Hall.
But it wasn't y'all.
The council, the past council.
Y'all, y'all didn't do it, because I was the one that spoke against it too.
Past council.
Look Susan, let me tell you something, right now, you don't, right now, right now, you don't.
I mean, this is an addition, a little addition to a building.
We gonna talk politics, okay? Right now, you don't have a city jail. And if I was a member, a citizen of, trust, what we're taking out prisons to. The next election, with all the stuff that going along in Leeds right now, you know what I'll say to that person who's running? If Leeds got that much money, hell, no, let them house their own prisons, they building a City Hall and all of this here. I mean, politics is being played in this here, and that's what's gonna happen. And then you gonna be looking for a City Hall to put the jail, to jail all your people. Now you better start thinking a little bit different. I mean, and you can get lightheaded and, and if it don't take you but three minutes to spend eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to me, it don't seem like it don't.
Where did three minutes come from? Three minutes, we discussed it for an hour.
Well, three hours, three hours or hours. And you done already decided what you gonna do with eight hundred and fifty thousand? And you done already decided what you gonna do with eight hundred and fifty thousand. I guess you done forgot about the rest of the city.
No, I haven't. We have, no Kenneth, we've built, we have paved roads. We have fixed drainage, we've redone the tennis courts, we've redone the park for the children, we've upgraded the park out here. We have, we're building a new fire station, which should've been built twenty years ago and wasn't. We have, um, we're getting a grocery store back in here and revitalizing an old sort of town.
Years ago, you probably wouldn't have got that new fire station if you wouldn't have got Bass Pro down there.
They bought the land twenty years ago down there next to Kewa.
Twenty years ago.
Yes, they did.
But you know what, as a citizen, you still have a right to come up to.
Only one of us sitting up here that's been on the council that long.
You darn right, I've been on it that long. But you've been a citizen that long. And if you had any problem with not building it, you should've came up here and forced your opinion.
I came to council meetings.
Never have come to this council, me and Susan, until we started getting Bass Pro. For twenty years, I've been sitting there and I've sat right there.
Many times.
Said right now, you haven't. There's no sense of lying about it. And I'm, I'm not lying.
All right, all right, y'all gotta calm down.
But, but I'm, what I'm saying is, you can't just take eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money and give it away. Now, you do what you wanna do, you have the votes to do it. But my caution is, I cautioned this council once before, that you take all this money and spend it. The next administration come in, all these employees that we have, that administration is gonna start cutting them, laying them off.
Y'all did in those six.
I, I did not do that. Matter of fact, I was the only one voted against it. I sure did.
But we giving Bass Pro thirty-two million, we giving all this money.
It came up and those employees start getting laid off because they got a raise. So now, you do what you wanna do, but you shouldn't break this city just because you're going out or we going out and it's time for election again. You should do that. You gonna break them here. Yes, you are too.
We've had a bad bu- balanced budget.
But, but look.
We balanced the budget.
And you say you gonna fix, you say you gonna fix these ditches. I got one on Leno Street right over there right now. It's a tear-raining people yards, tearing the whole yard up. The lady that came out several times, it's a whole street that need to be fixed. It's not fixed yet. You, 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 you got a park over here that's one of the worst parks in the community. You know what I said the last time? That the group, you know, you wanna talk about this group that, uh, we had in the last administration? Let me tell you what I see. When they came down here, went to Washington, I mean, to New York to do the budget, they came back. They took people down every street it was, itself, and then taken down Highway twenty-five. And they didn't take them to Russell Heights. You know what? Because those was the two areas was the tear-rain. Because you ashamed of those areas, because those areas need fixing. Now, you got eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the crime and everything that's going on, you gotta be able to help them people over there. Fix those, fix that area. They deserve it. See, it's a something about when you working for the city. You should unite all your people. And y'all are not doing that.
I have to get.
You leaving so many people out there. And, and, and this budget, it's so much money being scattered here to wait in this budget that it's pitiful. And I don't care what you say, I see. You didn't think I was gonna look at it, but I have. You just scattered money around and that's wrong.
We went over that budget in a, in a, in a budget work session with every department head and every council person that was present. Line by line.
You're right.
And I resent, being, I resent it. I resent it being said that we are trying to break the city. This city is in better financial condition than it has been in years.
It should be.
And we are proud of it.
But it won't be in two more years. Believe me, if you keep doing the way you're doing now.
The budget's balanced.
The budget's not balanced.
The income stream's there.
No, it's not.
And the income stream's there because of stuff that's been done under our administration, not under Bass Pro and any of that stuff. None of that stuff is, is an income stream for this city. Now Walmart and Lowe's is, yes. The rest of this stuff, Bass Pro, all that, that's not an income string for this, this city. It's been a detriment, plain and simple. Where's all them businesses Bass Pro's gonna bring in now that we're with it?
Detriment. You sit up here and give away one and a half percent of your revenue, like you got them kind of money to give away.
Look, they have to generate it to get it back. It's not coming out of our general budget.
But you ask all these citizens that work here every day to come in and give up occupation tax when they got families to feed every day, but you wanna go in here and give away something?
Well, you know.
And, and, and that's wrong.
What's the, what are we getting from it now? What are we getting over there now? Empty shopping center? What we lose CBS, what we gonna have? All that empty shopping center. How's that gonna help the city? We giving one and a half percent up to a certain amount of money to revitalize that whole area. One and a half percent of something.
And as a council member, you can't even tell me what stores come. I'm just sitting up here voting for some apple. Cause nobody knows. Now, now, that's just reality of.
We know the grocery stores come. That's all we worried about, right now?
Might be a gigantic chunk. Ain't gonna tell what it is.
Well, is that better, i- is that worse than an empty shopping center?
Did you get them, did you give everyone else one and a half percent?
No, you know.
Then you got a shopping center down here with a little small grocery store to open down here. Did you give that person one and a half percent of your sales? Did you give it to them? Why?
You know, my family's been here for forty-something years. They ain't gotta die.
But that forty-some year, but I'm talking about the one that just opened.
We talking about revitalizing a, a strip mall in the middle of the city that's gonna be totally emptied. We don't want that.
Anything in this old shopping center. Wasn't nothing in it. Did you give one and a half percent?
You know, and I'll tell you what I resent, what. I tell you what I resent.
What?
I resent the fact that you're the one that sat up here and saying one percent of something, something, when Grand River was gonna be a fifty-four million dollar bond. And now that we fixed all that, you don't say nothing about that. Now you saying, oh, you giving away one percent of taxpayers' money?
Well, wait a minute.
You gave away four, wait, I'm talking, wait a minute.
You're right. I'm just gonna get on and talk.
Four percent of everything that's on that one forty-eight, that's why we can't get no businesses there, ancillary district, all that kind of stuff. You was up here voting for all that crap. And you gonna come in here and say our one and a half percent for grocery store is gonna, is a problem? I mean, you know, you stuck this city, you helped stick this city with ninety-one million dollars in debt. Ninety-one million dollars, more than the Jefferson County sewer system, per person, than the Jefferson County sewer system's on top of people. You gonna come in here and criticize us bouts in the budget for three years, doing more projects than been done in twenty years in this city? They putting water lines in the Russell Heights right now. We fixing four or five ditches over there right now. The road will be paved to Charles Barkley if the water lines is put in. They're gonna be fixed. We're fixing projects all over Leeds. I can make a list of every district of all the stuff we've done, and you can see that there's a ton of stuff being done. Go look.
Cause I can't see it.
You know?
Was it done today?
I tell you what, it's got a lot better chance of being done with this council that's been done in the last twenty years.
Because you know something? The last administration brought in two new schools. And you right. There were some things I had, yeah, you got a way to pay for it. But see, y'all got all the answers to everything. But at the same time, if you don't have this grant, this shopping center down here. You won't be able to pay for those two new schools. How, how you gonna, how you gonna pay for it? How, how you gonna pay for it?
Before we fixed Grand River, the contract for Grand River, there was no money to pay for those schools, none.
How you gonna pay for it without, without?
Obligation bond that was gonna be based on a sales tax. All the money was going to Grand River. And what didn't go to Grand River is going, split between Moody and St. Clair County. Now, we fixed that, this council fixed that. There was a one point four million dollar shortfall in it, and we had to went out there and busted our butts for thirteen months. We'd be still having a shortfall and Grand River and Daniels and them be getting fifty-four million dollars of a, of a limited obligation bond. We fixed that. Grand River didn't come in here and fix those schools based on what y'all did. Fifty-four million dollars, and we dropped it down to twenty-eight million dollars and got one cent tarred out. And you know, you gonna come up here and criticize us?
No, then you gonna criticize me for trying to, uh, get Bass Pro. But you know, it's a lot of things happening with Bass Pro.
Criticize.
That's right.
It's easy to criticize that.
Things I voted against. If you look at the Rucker, go back and look at the Rucker. They called me Mr. No Man, because I was voting on a lot of stuff. And like I'm voting on this here. Cause this don't make sense. You gonna take eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money.
We got two years.
Roads and stuff that out here that really need to be fixed. You got, still got a park over there that you promised. The people that stood up in front of everybody over there and said, I see what your problem is, and I know. And it ain't a damn thing been done.
Oh, it has.
No, it hasn't. You wanna know the truth, it ain't nothing been done. It ain't nothing been done but the grass cut, Eric.
Okay, so you think?
Just start, you need to stop lying about it because it's in worse shape than the war.
Ditches and all. Is that what you think?
No, it's flooding all over the city. It's flooding all, all over the city. No, you fixing some of it. You not fixing.
We fixing.
No, you're not.
Yes, we are.
No, you're not.
What was done in the past? Nothing, nothing.
That's right.
What was done when you were here before?
We set up here every taxpayer in this city. You got occupation tax. They went up on every tax that was in the city.
I didn't pass a single one of those taxes.
You darn right, but you spending and reaping the benefits.
I'm not spending any of this stuff, no, no. That money's going to the people.
If you didn't, we'll still be in the same shape that we was in back then. Because you know what? There was no money. There was no money when we got Bass Pro shop, because the city couldn't afford it. They couldn't do anything. They couldn't do nothing. There wasn't no money.
And what's it done for?
And you know what? We lost jobs and stuff. We had all the firemen scared to even, even sit down and, and think about what they was gonna do.
And we hired them back.
In this bounce town.
Uh, we hired them back.
You know why?
We got them all.
The other group was, is not here to hire them. They probably hired them back too.
You know, we got them back. We bridged revenue. We balanced the budget.
We can sit here and debate this all day, but the problem still lies. You take eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to do the City Hall. And I'm not mad about doing the City Hall, it's the way you gonna about do it.
So we shouldn't do it and just not have it.
But it's a lot of other things out there. You said you were gonna build a water park for these kids. What you gonna do about that? That's not important no more, yes. You just make a decision, one minute, three hours, make a decision.
One at a time.
You can't, but, but that was first.
So you rather, you think we need to have a water park over having a place for our police and our administration and all that stuff?
Miss Ernest wasn't even talking about kids down there playing in the creek, wanna get them out of the water. Send the police down there to get them out. That costs you money. Yeah, man, you, you can't sit up here and talk to me like that, cause you doing what you wanna do.
I'm doing what's right.
No, you're not doing what, like, cause if you did what's right, you would involve the whole council.
That's the problem. That's the problem. For twenty years, you ain't done what's right. And that's the problem.
That's the only thing to be.
And we coming up here doing what's right, and you can't stand to say it approved.
Opportunity to do something, you change.
All right. Let's vote.
Let me just say something while y'all spent thirty minutes. And I, you gonna read my piece of it too. Uh, I don't have a problem with building that. I have a problem with you for not telling the whole damn council what's going on. And I am sick and tired of that, because you need to show me some respect, because I was elected to this office. And I hope you understand what I'm telling you.
I understand.
But see, you, see, you're a lot different than me. Fabric. You're spoiled, but I wouldn't. And I know what it is to go out here bust my butt and get things. But I'm telling you, I was elected to this post. And I wanna be respected, just like Kenneth Washington does and everybody on this thing. I'll tell you one thing, buddy, I wouldn't do you this way. You need to call and let your council know what's going on, instead of sneaking stuff by them all the time. If you don't like it, I really don't care. But I will vote now.
All righty, let's vote. All right, all those favor Resilience two thousand eleven ten oh five, say aye. I mean, oh three.
Aye.
Do we, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, 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 okay. Aye?
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
All right. All right. I guess we covered this.
We've covered some of it, it'll be a second half.
All right. Resolution two thousand eleven ten oh five, contract was legislated by Department Office. Did I hear a motion? All right, did I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I want to see some information on this if I can, before we do anything.
All right. All those, uh.
Is there a max that could get on this?
I mean. I mean, somebody had seen somebody, no, we gotta do this.
Well, we, well, we have to approve it. But don't we get, we get to vote to approve this?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, see.
That's what I'm talking about.
You can talk to him.
If the, um, if the district changed more than five percent, we have to redistrict.
Okay, but where is that at?
Where is that rule at? Um, with a question, I'm not sure if this carry's been handling it, but I'll give that to you.
How about sending that now?
I will.
Thank you.
All right.
By email.
Yeah, and would you send me it too?
I sure will.
Thank you.
All right. All those favor two thousand eleven ten oh five, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Is that the same thing that's going on with the Holy State, where they're having state district?
Can you get some leads, magistrates? Okay, there's an article in there about redistricting. But you saw even, um, several weeks ago and, uh, St. Clair agents, they wrote about, um, one of those small cities doing their redistricting. I mean, we're a little bit behind.
Okay, take public comments. Uh, you have two minutes. Give me your name and address, please.
My name is Fanny Burt, and I would like to speak to the council and the mayor. Y'all sit at full example for the people that are here that listen. It, it, you know, this stuff should've been discussed before you came, before, before y'all sitting on seats.
We can't.
I'm sorry, let me take, I gotta go. You need to have respect, you know, because if y'all already standing up there, what do you think we should do? We should sit here and have to listen at this stuff that's going on. And y'all need to have more respect than you have for each other. It's a full example.
My next. T L Harmon, fifty-six twelve Smith Road, Pales City, Alabama. Coming about bail bonding license, we gone through this two years ago. And you seem to, uh, going back and trying to make us get licensing Shelby Jefferson, St. Clair, when the city of Leeds resides in Jefferson County. I would like to be shown where it is at stake, we have to be licensed in all three counties to do bail bonds. Uh, we were sent a letter stating that, um, that, um, we needed to do this. We just went through this two years ago, had to hire a lawyer. Also had to hire a lawyer.
And you didn't have to at that time.
No, and we've never had to. And there's nothing that says we have to, no. There's, there's nothing that says we have to. Um, we were referred to Eric Locke by the magistrate, referred to him. Kind of, say I had an attorney, send him a letter, no response. So you can't get in touch with him, only through email. We got no response from him. Um, the letter that we were sent from y'all was for surety companies. We're professional bond companies. We don't operate the same as a surety company. So, some of the things that was, um, going on was not for us. Um, I got in touch with the president of the Bail Bond Association. He says there's nothing that says we have to do that. Um, the Shelby County magistrate says we don't have to do that. Um, the Shelby County magistrate says we don't have to do that. Um, we're the only company that, that works, operates in the city of Leeds, I assume that has to do that, the bail bond company. Um, there's nothing that says, or if there is, I'd like to see it. All I've asked is, show me what y'all basing this on, and we've got no response.
Like they sent you a letter on.
We, we do.
But it's not, it don't say where they're getting, there's no law that says.
What we've sent, you have a law in it, thirteen fifteen, one sixteen, one fifty-nine.
I got it right here.
That's the legislation.
But that's for sure.
Well, but one sixty, you're a professional bail bonds.
Right.
One sixty says right here.
Right.
It's down there in the yellow, the order granting office shall be reissued annually prior to January first of each year by the presiding circuit judge of the county in which the company desires to execute bail or appearance bonds. I, the company that I desire to do business in, I don't desire to do business in Shelby County, I desire to do business with the city of Leeds, which is in Jefferson County.
This is where I stand on that, um, I'm not going to keep multiple lists, we have to, we have a list that we have to.
We don't have to have multiple lists.
The municipal board of leads has to have a list approving the bail bonding companies, okay? If we make a separate list saying, okay, J and J and Harmon's bonding is exempt from Shelby County. We have to then make another list for those folks to say, well, I don't wanna do it in Jefferson County, or I don't wanna do it in Shelby County. It causes a big fiasco.
The judge is saying that what she's saying is what he won't divide.
But that's not right, there's no law that says that.
Well, the law that, that, the law that Mr. Locke is relying on is the statute that you just.
We're doing business with the city of.
Which is law, that, the statute is what we go on.
That, that is what he's relying on, I'm just telling you, you asked, you said, what is, what are you relying on?
But it don't say.
That's what Mr. Locke said, well, it says that you have to be licensed in the county where you execute.
Not where I desire.
Well, I, I don't think you're reading that correctly, I'm not gonna argue with him.
I'm not gonna argue either, because I'm executing in city of Leeds, which is in Jefferson County.
It depends on what type of bond, you talked, obviously talked to the magistrate about this.
No, I'm not, I haven't talked, I talked to the.
Well, some of the redsuits in.
And we went to the same thing again.
Right, the, the deal is, and, and their letter, their attorney's letter stated, um, there's no appeals in Shelby County, that may be true, we rarely have them. But there is a possibility that there will be appeals in Shelby County.
But ma'am, that don't concern us.
It will concern you if you're on my list for bonding company, it is, it is, it would be disastrous for me to have to do multiple lists just to appease you for not getting a Shelby County license.
Why, why are you doing multiple lists? If anybody's licensed in Jefferson County, it should be one list.
Because we have, we have one list, okay?
There should be only one list.
Leeds is in three counties, three counties.
I'm not trying to be yucky. Well, I'm not trying to be, I'm sorry, because this has been going on and on and Leeds is in Jefferson County where I come and do business. It don't matter where they're rested at, it matters where they bond at. I'm doing business with the city of.
No, it, it does matter.
They can appeal to any all three counties.
Yes, that's why.
But that doesn't concern the bail bond company.
Yes, it does, because they have to have a bond.
They can get somebody, when they appeal to the Jefferson, uh, Shelby County, they can get a bondman in Shelby County.
Right, right, but they have to go off on our list. And you see, if I have you listed on the list, then they're gonna assume that they can use you for Shelby County and they can't.
And all they're gonna do is call me and say, I don't have, uh, Shelby County.
What, what, why is, what is the issue with, do we have other bail bondsmen who aren't approved by all three?
Every, all, all of, all of them were approved except for him and J and J, all of, so everyone.
You asked that question. So how many are there that are approved in all three counties?
Do you remember, maybe?
I mean, we talked.
Maybe ten.
Alright, so what, what is the issue that you do not wanna be approved in Shelby County?
It's twenty-five thousand dollar issue.
It's a twenty-five thousand dollar bond.
I have to put up twenty-five thousand dollars to get a license.
Is it cash bond or?
Yeah, I have to put twenty-five thousand dollars in.
Is it a cash bond?
It's, I, it says insurance bond.
No, I'm not an insurance, I'm a professional, I do, I put twenty-five thousand dollars in escrow, if I, if it was going to buy a hundred and fifty dollar license, I'd fly down there tomorrow. I have to put twenty-five thousand dollars in escrow account to get a, to get approved in Shelby County.
Mayor, every other jurisdiction that I've contacted that is in multiple jurisdictions, they all do this as well.
That's not right. Argo is in Shelby, I mean, uh, Saint Clair and Jefferson.
That's not one of our calls though.
And Trustful, Trustful's in, um, Saint Clair and Jefferson, they don't work either. There's no law.
No, we've got the law that we have and we have this, this man at the administrative office of courts telling our magistrate that it is required.
That this is what I do.
He won't respond.
So, I mean, I, I would like him to respond because the problem is, I think, our magistrate, that is who supervises her.
That's, that, that's.
And that, that is an issue for us to just disregard what Mr. Locke says as, as how he interprets that section.
So they need to talk to Mr. Locke, really.
Well, I don't.
They want to call him back.
He won't, he won't respond to it because there's no law. Says we get to do that.
Their, the statute is the law, so, and, and as long as he's telling me that, as long as he is telling me that this is what I have to do, I have to do it because then I jeopardize my license. I cannot perform my duties as a magistrate if they sanction me, and they will, if I'm not abiding by their laws and their rules and regulations.
And they gonna do it.
And the judge will, the judge stands behind me one hundred percent.
Locked off, you know, most.
So if, if, if they, AOC decides, okay, you know what, we're gonna change this, then by all means, I will do whatever they say, but right now, I cannot change what they've told me to do.
And the statute says a corporate surety bond, it doesn't say a cash bond, so.
Surety companies are insured to an insurance company, we're professional bonds, so we.
I know, I'm looking at your statute, if you'll read it, it says that you have to provide an original corporate surety bond, maybe you could check on that and see if that resolves the issue, and if you can go and, and, and if it's, cause I know it's cheaper to get a surety bond, right? I believe it is, if you can check on that, that would resolve the issue, and you already said, if it was a matter of paying that hundred and fifty dollar grant, you would do that.
I would love to go down there.
Well, can you address that with, I, I don't know where you thought it had to be cash bond and I understand that concern.
Well, I'm a professional bail bondsman and I know what's, I'm.
And that's what it says, no professional bail company, I think that, I'm not certain, but I thought that encompassed what you did.
I know, but what I'm saying is, I, the stuff that was sent to me.
I don't know what, are you looking at one fifty-nine?
I'm looking.
Section one fifty-nine?
I'm looking at fifteen, thirteen, one sixty, professional bail bond company.
Is that you or not?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you'll go to that subsection one, says you can provide an original corporate surety bond.
Or escrow agreement.
Or escrow agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
So what, I mean, if you could check into that, cause wouldn't it be probably about a hundred and fifty dollars to get a twenty-five thousand dollar surety bond? And this could resolve it right now.
I have no idea, I've never done an insurance company because I'm a professional.
Well, how do you do your bond rejection count?
I put twenty-five thousand dollars in escrow.
Okay, well, maybe you need to check on that for the other counties too, you save yourself a lot of money. If I save you twenty, if I save you twenty-three thousand dollars tonight, maybe you.
Well, there's difference, no, then I have to pay the insurance company.
Right, you have to pay them a premium, but it, it would be, it's always less than a cash.
But it also states that.
I mean, I'm just suggesting it, I, I don't know enough about your business, you know, to check into that.
And that's what I would have to do, but then I'm, but that's not, I'm just saying that's not what.
Well, you just said, if that's all it requires, then you would do that, so.
Yeah, for a hundred and fifty dollars, yeah, but.
You would check into that.
I will check into that.
Is there some way we can get this Mr. Locke to communicate with him? Um, Eric is over at AOC and he, he gets emails and things, and he does get to them and when he can, um, he, he has a law, um, he's having to deal with, I mean, he's down in Montgomery, so. If he got an email from them, he'll address it, I don't know when, but he'll address it.
He said it's been a month.
Well, it, it takes him a week or two to get back to me and I'm, I'm one of his magistrate's, so.
Okay, I'm just asking, maybe he just got it.
That's a big part of the problem. Well, he's, he's gonna tell him the same thing because what I, what we have sent in the letter form came from AOC, so he's gonna tell him the same thing.
I see what he's saying, though, if he's. Yeah, I can get back with you, I mean, I'd like him to check on surety bond, cause I think would resolve this. Well, if you don't wanna do it, you may not.
Well, there's a lot more, I don't know all the ins and outs of the surety, but I've never done it, but I think there's a lot of.
If they don't wanna do it, that's it, I can tell him.
Will you just check into it, that's all, all I'm asking you.
I'd love to, but you see, they've been doing it for years, so has, so has Joe. We've been doing here for years and not, and every time this happens, I need magistrate to, and I'm not saying anything against you, I've never met you.
Well, clearly there's a, there's a discrepancy there, I mean, with, with what the magistrate wants to support, needs to set up.
Yeah, but the judge.
Oh, I'm not saying that.
Are you the same one with?
I mean.
Is it Harmon bonds?
Yes, sir.
What Doug had?
Yes, sir. Went to the same argument.
How did, how did he operate down here for up to ten years?
Same thing, they went to the same argument back then.
I mean, he worked right across street from City Hall, had the sign and everybody.
My granddaddy started nineteen thirty-six and he been there long in Jefferson, Saint Clair, Shelby, back, we don't have Shelby anymore, at Taldegg, it's never been a problem. I think it's in the eighties, they had a little problem, they did it back the other way, when Mr. Jenny come on a couple of years ago, same thing, we had this problem. Now that there's somebody new, they call Eric Locke, he's the word, it's kinda.
He's the guru of magistrates. He's a guru of magistrates.
Well, and I just don't see, we're doing business with the city of Leeds.
When, when Jenny was here.
As a bail bond company's only one to have to get, I mean, it's the same thing that, that he just said, you know, about registering the vote. The state said that he don't have, you know, that y'all don't have to do that.
Yeah, I called the state and the state said, no, we do not.
I don't see any difference.
But if you're in three counties, you have to in the city of Leeds.
Registering.
You know, and you write the line for, I'm just saying.
The election, that's a totally different statute, there's nothing to do.
Prisoners in three counties.
Do you, so if, if you don't get a license, if you don't get a license in Shelby County, you can't have one in Leeds, right?
We're the only county that has to buy in three. No, I just didn't wanna put up another twenty-five thousand dollars for the city of Leeds, that's basically all it is.
For sure.
I'm not, that means I'm gonna have seventy-five thousand dollars in escrow account for the city of Leeds.
But whether the statute reads, we, we believe you can use a bond, like a.